The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, Jerry, you want, Jim, you want to go ahead and talk now?
Sure.
Come on up there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and Councilman, or Commissioners, I'm sorry. My name is Jim Bridges, I'm a local resident, been here approximately fifteen years, and I have three issues on my agenda, and if I can give you some pictures, first one, and I'm not gonna trash the previous Commissioner, that I was made false promises, that our code enforcing agent was gonna send out letters on the weeds in property, on my prop, or behind my property, and then after thirty days, if they didn't do something, the city would take charge, clean the lot, and bill the people. That's the property you see, it's between my home and Padre Mio's old restaurant over on Third Street. The second issue, the house that you have there on the corner of Third and Stevens has been condemned, they put signs up, vagrants live in it, police have been called numerous times by myself, they take the transience out, and that's all they do. The house is a health issue, I feel, it's a buyer issue to the neighbor next door to it, and the vagrants continue to live in it. I'd like to know from Mr. Lewis if there's anything in the plans to get rid of these after, like they did, like the roaring twenties, and, you know, are we gonna be tongue full of false promises? I'm, uh, that's it, I mean...
Jim, I'll tell you right now, no false promises.
All right, I'd love to hear that.
And I'll tell you right now that that one will be torn down.
When?
Oh, give us, give us about six months or so.
I love it.
We've got some money left over from the roaring twenties, which we didn't have to pay for.
Right.
We've got some money left over from the old wastewater treatment plant down there that we didn't have to pay for.
Right.
Um, we can put that one on the priorities. As a matter of fact, Marty, why don't you step up and take that right there, and put it on your priority list with the old jail and those other properties that Paul showed you.
It's already been on the list, right?
Yes, it should have already been on the list.
It, I was told it was...
We'll take care of it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We're not gonna, we're gonna, we're not gonna make promises that ain't gonna be kept.
All right, thank you, I appreciate your time.
We'll take care of that one.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, you wanna wait till it comes up? Okay. Uh, item number one is public comment and discussion on our charter compliance, is there anybody out there that'd like to make a comment on our charter compliance? Once again, I will, we are in compliance with it for the first time since two thousand and eight. Has the council had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, sorry about that, guys. Start over here again. A roll call.
Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Lieutenant Quintana?
Here.
Councilor Sandoval?
Councilor Dickens?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
Now, you're taking a motion to accept the agenda.
I make a motion to accept an agenda for tonight.
On second.
Councilor Quintana?
Yes.
Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, now the meetings.
Uh, just one slight change on the minutes, on honor of streets named after me, but it should be Dixie.
Which one is that?
On, uh, comments on page two.
Any other corrections?
That's all I could see.
I'll accept the motion with no corrections.
One second there.
Councilor Quintana?
Yes.
Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Mario, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I didn't want to interrupt when you were accepting the agenda, but I was actually hoping that item three is tied to six, seven, eight, and nine, so would it be more appropriate to table this one?
To move four into three?
Uh, I, I can sit down, and yes, sir, you can proceed with four and five, and then I'll step back up, is that okay?
That's fine. Jerry, you're up there with the website.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Um, I was just here today to, um, put in a good word for the website, the, uh, the city website. Now, um, what I would like to see is, you know, I, since I, everybody knows I'm involved with the Fiesta de Colores, and since we did our, renewed our website last year, Mr. Lewis here made a video for us, uh, we've got quite a few hits on that, and it has done excellent job, you know, uh, everybody passing through town, uh, we get a lot of hits, I get a lot of calls, um, this is the future, this is the age of information. Everybody going through grants or past grants is gonna Google grants, and they're gonna see what they could do, where they can eat, where they're, where they can, uh, go to the movie, you know, buy a pizza, whatever they need to do on this, and believe you and me, this is the wave of the future. And the better of a webpage we could have, the better we're gonna have, uh, more economic success in, in grants, in the grants area. Um, I've noticed Albuquerque has a really neat website, it's called ABQ365, and if you get on that, it tells you everything that's going on, um, it's updated regularly, and, uh, it, it's a really neat thing. A lot of the older generation, they don't use computers unless their grandkids show them how, or their phones, but it's getting to be where everybody is using their phones now, you know, computers and phones, uh, it's, it's a wave of the future, and I'd like to see, um, a better webpage produced with more information, um, just everything you can think of, but I, uh, I'm just here to, to, uh, to buck that and say we need a new, a new, better system on there.
I agree. Okay?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Jerry, are you referring just to the city alone, or the whole community as a whole?
Well, actually, the city and the whole community, I noticed on the website, it tells you, you can go to the county site, you can go to the, the, uh, chamber site, you can go to all different sites, well, you know, that, that helps immensely, you know, when somebody, somebody breaks down, for instance, they're gonna Google, where can I get my tire fixed, where can I, you know, go eat while my tire's getting, well, they need to know all this stuff. The phone books and phone booths are a thing of the past, you can't walk down the street and, you know, look up the Yellow Pages and see where you, what you need anymore, so this is the future, this is the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Now, what I'm, what I'm looking at here is the proposed website rebuild budget.
Right.
Four thousand one thirty, who, who would do this? Uh, this is a, a specific type of website called Content Management System, and, um, I feel like, uh, this is the type of website that will be, actually, this Chamber of Commerce is the website that we're talking about, not the city website. The government city website, it would remain as it is, because it's, uh, uh, not only is Denise used to working with it, and it's working fine the way it is, just for government purposes, but, uh, for promoting our town, promoting tourism, and, and, uh, and retirees, I think it's the Chamber website that really needs to be, get a re, a rebuild.
Get a rebuild.
Yeah. And it's already that content management system, this guy already knows about it, he's from Kansas, he's the only one I found, I even Googled in New Mexico for, uh, DNNs called .net nuke, and it's a type of website where you can replace modules that will, uh, do various kinds of things. If you're familiar with Juma, um, .net nuke, they're the same type of website. I've got about a seven-minute video here, presentation to, to, uh, to play. Uh, anyone in the audience that want to watch this thing, and you can move down into this area, because it's not that easy to see from back there, so if you want to come up here, you're welcome to come up before we start. This year, during the 2014 political campaign, at every event, someone in the audience would stand up and recommend that the City of Grants begin promoting our diverse, beautiful, and interesting culture that surrounds our entire area. Over and over, we would hear from people in the audience say that we are missing an opportunity to build our economic base by promoting our rich and diverse cultures, landscapes, and natural wonders. Within a hundred-mile radius, Grants has more places to see and things to do than any part of New Mexico. Chaco Canyon, Mount Taylor, Zuni, El Malpais, El Moro, and Acoma, all within one hour of Grants, and when you reach out a little further, the choices are endless. According to the New Mexico Department of Transportation, forty-five thousand five hundred vehicles pass Grants on I-40 each day, and based on a recent survey of four thousand consumers, eighty percent of the respondents made travel arrangements online, and sixty percent of the respondents use mobile apps when traveling. That means that around thirty-six thousand travelers a day that are passing Grants are looking at their internet, making travel plans. So how do we tap into this group? Well, we don't need a survey to tell us that people are depending on the internet more and more every day, we need a website that is visually attractive, informative, and interesting, and grabs the attention of travelers before they pass and as they pass through Grants. Today, people are reading less and depending more on imagery, we need a website that is full of great photographs and videos that create interest in the places they are about to visit.
The footpaths and trails originated long ago in old Mexico, and winding past the mountains and mesas and malpais of these desert lands in New Mexico are called the ancient way. Along these trails exist today alligator juniper and Douglas fir trees that are centuries old. These are the silent observers of the travelers on the ancient way, and what a tale they could tell about this colorful procession of peoples representing an astounding diverse mix of cultures, religions, time periods, ethnicity, skills. Some came seeking adventure, some opportunity, some inspiration, and some a home, here in the high desert of northwest New Mexico, where they give life and form to some of the most beautiful art and craft in the world. The ancient way is now mostly, but not entirely paved, and not with gold as the conquistadors of the past had hoped, but with treasure of a different sort. Treasure that awaits those modern travelers awaits you as you begin your journey on the ancient way arts trail. You could begin your journey in Grants on the Mother Road, Old Route 66.
So our website would have a wide range of photographs and videos that are clickable and create interest for our potential visitors. When people see the variety of things that are hard to do here, it'll be a no-brainer for them, and they'll stay in our area for two or three days. Here are some local attractions and events that happen in our area. The Mount Taylor Annual Fifty-K Run, the Tour de Acoma, our local golf tournaments, our local baseball tournaments, the quadrathlon, the Christmas Light Parade, several local rodeos, Fiesta de Colores, Fourth of July Parade, the Bike Rally, the Summer Concert Series, the Riverwalk Park, and Coyote del Malpais Golf Course. And here are some places to see and things to do. Acoma Pueblo, Sky City, La Bintana Arch, El Malpais National Monument, Laguna Historic Church, Guadalupe Vineyards, Sandstone Bluffs, Benarros, Mount Taylor, Gooseberry Trail, several historic churches, Sky City Casino, Dancing Eagle Casino, Continental Divide Trail, the Ice Caves, Zuni Pueblo, Petroglyphs National Monument, Chaco Culture Historical National Park, Double Six Gallery, Art and Artifacts Museum, Route 66, the Mother Road, Zuni Mount Nado Tour, the Aviation Heritage Museum, Rama Farmer's Market, Blue Water Lake, the Bisti Bad Lions, the New Mexico Mining Museum, the Crown Point Rug Auction, Gallup, Red Rock State Park, the Zuni Mountain Bike Tour, Northwest New Mexico Visitors Information Center, Post Office Plats, and Trophy Elk Hunting. So who's gonna do all this work? Well, Grants is at a turning point, and it's time that we had a full-time marketing director, someone with strong video production skills and advertising skills, who can create and produce all of our billboards, all of our magazine advertising, all of our video production, and any television advertising we do. They would promote all of our upcoming events, including the light parade, the bike rally, the quadrathlon, and our summer concert series. They would design and produce all of our table tents located at motels and restaurants, and they would design all of the signage throughout our city. They would develop and maintain a working relationship with all our motels and restaurants, and they would do the daily maintenance of our website, which would include a rolling calendar of events. They would post all of our upcoming events on our Facebook page and our website, including golf tournaments, baseball tournaments, parades, music events, and gallery openings. This would be a coordinated advertising and marketing campaign that would streamline our marketing efforts. There would be a steering committee for our director with one person from the City Council, the Chamber, Main Street, the Arts Council, and Lodger's Tax. Most people in Grants know that I-40 is a built-in revenue stream, so let's tap into it and help all our businesses and citizens benefit from the gold mine that's on I-40. So anyway, just something to start thinking about, we, uh, we have our budget process coming up soon, and we're going through it right now, Marty.
And, uh, we're talking about employing somebody full-time there?
Well, it's probably a full-time job to do, um, to, for a marketing director, it's, it would take a lot of work to, to pull something like that together, when you're talking about all of the events that I mentioned on there that we have, and all of the places that we have that we can go. I think people are, uh, reading less and depending more on imagery and videos, and when they see these, uh, videos that would raise interest in these places, I think that it's gonna be a thing that will, uh, entice people to stay, to come and stay, when they're making these travel plans.
What do you think that position should pay?
You're probably gonna have to pay between forty and fifty thousand a year, eight hundred to a thousand a month. I'm sure that, uh, somebody with these skills would probably looking at somebody two or three years out of college, uh, that, that has a degree in marketing and, uh, video production, that's, that's where I'd like to see their strengths, is in video production, because I think that's, uh, the, the, the strongest point in a, in a website, I think, uh, the strongest draw is videos, people really like them and watch them, they just have to sit back and watch, they don't have to read, they don't have to thumb through things, they don't have to click on anything, you know, they just watch them. And I, I'm hoping and thinking that that's what's gonna convince people to come here and stay here. There's too much to do in one day, you know, I mean, there's so many things around here to do, and there's a lot of things that are happening here that people don't even know about, and places around here that people don't know about, and if we tell them about it, I think, uh, the, um, the, the traffic in the town will grow.
We'll look at it in the budget process, definitely. Anything else on that, Mike?
Well, I, I think that's a good idea, I support that.
Next, we have a memorandum of agreement for the Riverwalk Legacy Trail, I guess
I'm doing this one, this is just so that the county can give us some money, okay? And all it is, is, as you can see, I've already signed it, and what we need to, we need the council to send it to, to Eddie Michael, and what he'll give us is give us a planning and design basis seventy thousand dollars for the construction base of this, of this legacy trail. On that note, I will entertain a motion to accept a memorandum of understanding between the City of Grants and the Sebola County for the Riverwalk Legacy Trail project. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement.
Second? No, second. Councilor Quintana?
Yes.
Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, Mario, now you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Council, pleasure to be here, let, uh, keep me a second here to... Okay, thank you. Whoop, what did I do? Should we just get back in here? Oh, yeah. Okay, now we should be in there.
In the agenda, we've got a number of items, and this presentation's gonna cover each one of those. We've got item six, capital water and wastewater infrastructure improvements, and seven, College Road Bridge replacement, and eight, Radio Street environmental review, and item nine, Second Street, Phase Two. My intent, as I go through the agenda today, is I'm gonna show you a location map of, to orient everybody here tonight as to the projects that we're talking about, where they are. I'll give you some background information, and then, Mayor, I think at that point, I'll stand for any questions, and then you can kind of bring up, uh, those particular items one by one and see what the pleasure of the council is. So, let's see. This location map identifies College Road Bridge here in this little red dot, as you know, it's heading north part of town. Second Street portion that we'll be talking about is illustrated here in red as well, between High Street and Verriol San Jose. Radio Street is on the far west, the south end of I-40, uh, west end of town, shown here, and then I'll, uh, down the presentation will also show you where the water, wastewater projects are located, so that should orient you. The first project that, uh, Council will be looking at here shortly is capital water and wastewater infrastructure improvements. With me tonight, I do have a student that, uh, is getting ready to graduate from Hope, Alonso, is observing tonight, I also got Eric, one of our engineers that has been working with ONI, to get a good handle on what the, uh, the issues are and the priorities. The handout that was given to, uh, Council, Show Jackson Street, um, you will, you will see that the three projects that we're talking about is Pill Street, Charles Street, not Jackson, and High Street. We coordinated with ONI and verified what the issues are, uh, and, and so I've identified the, the projects in order of priority, and I'm gonna have Eric, uh, come up here for a minute and kind of walk you through each of the projects and what the issues are according to ONI, and then I'm gonna take over and talk about what those repairs might mean if you choose to inform about them.
Good evening. Pill Street, as, uh, you might be well aware, that Grants' infrastructure is aging and crumbling, and this is the case on Pill Street, that's my understanding that the sewer line is at a point where the top of the pipe is no longer there, and, uh, same for some of the manholes. So this, this project on Pill Street is bounded by the Laguna and Central Avenue, eight hundred feet, and basically, it would just be a remove and replace. Uh, we have raw sewage that's leaking or percolating into the, into the ground, and, uh, it's a Charles Street is much like Pill Street, uh, only it's three hundred feet.
But Charles Street is the one that goes through the Els Lot, and looks into Jefferson?
Cook Center-Jefferson, yes, sir.
Correct?
And it has a failed manhole as well at Jefferson, yes, sir.
Right, so this, this project's bounded by the, the Laguna and Central, and the same thing, it's a clay pipe that's, uh, basically crumbling, the manhole is located, like Mario said, at the intersection of Jefferson, uh, this is also deemed a high priority project. High Street, this is a water, waterline project, currently there's a four-inch duct-to-liner pipe, and it's my understanding that ONI, they're out there in this location on a weekly basis, uh, maybe a break or a collapsed pipe, they're, they're out there weekly repairing. This project is bounded by Nimitz to Halsley, and from Halsley, bounded by Nimitz to Santa Fe Avenue, a total of fifteen hundred feet of replacement pipe.
The priority list is identified earlier, and you see in your agenda there, it did identify Pill Street first, Charles Street second, those are both gravity sewers, and then High Street being a waterline. Staff felt that it was important to bring the three projects before Council, and, uh, also, I, I just sort of kind of walk you through a scope of work, this board to, uh, the discovery body to be fully aware so that, um, you can make informed decisions, and then hopefully when the public calls this, uh, the office and the staff, you can assure them that, you know, it is being done within standard specifications, however, it's not a roadway job, it is a utility job, and it's probably not gonna look as attractive as one would want it. So that, that is that, I mean, does anybody have any questions on the, on the water and sewer job?
Mario, on the, on the, well, cost is warm, but on the location of the lines, where are they located, on the roadway center line, shoulder?
Um, so, to, to answer your question, the High Street waterlines are just off the center line slightly to the north, and that's because I've, actually, I've gone out there over the years when they're repairing some of the waterline. Uh, sewer and water, admittedly, I don't know, I have not been expected.
Pill is right down the middle of the road. Pill is right down the middle of the road, Jefferson is right down the middle of the road.
We, we might be able to answer those questions.
Yeah, they're right down the middle of the road.
Are they?
And what'll happen with that, I mean, you just can't really, if you're gonna have a center line, um, repair, you're gonna have to shut down the entire lane, correct?
Yes.
Or the entire roadway?
Yeah, yes.
You know, for that matter, because you won't be able to divert traffic onto a, uh, another road or another lane of, of travel?
No, you're, you're, you're pretty, well, you, so, um, in, in terms of what would happen in this case, the, the recommendation is, is, uh, the, the manager and I discussed is what's the most cost-effective way to handle these? My recommendation to, to the manager was to let's, let's go ahead and just put out a bit form of quantities, um, make the contract with for one year or two years, however you want, make it an on-call, and get some established quantity so that when you do have little things like this that come up, where it's just to pull it out and put in, you know, a switch like for like, so to speak, then you guys can have a contractor that's qualified, licensed, you have the specifications to do the work. I say that because I, I want discovery body to also understand what the procurement mechanism is going to be with the contractor. We're not talking full engineering design, we're not talking go and survey, we're not talking, uh, full construction drawings, we're just talking, put some contract bid documents together with a bit form, similar to what the state DOT would put out for paving or chip seal, that sort of thing, or, or GSA would put out on a statewide contract for, uh, contractor services, or the city has done on striking in the past. similar to what the state DOT would put out for paving or chip seal, that sort of thing, or, or GSA would put out on a statewide contract for contractor services, or the city has done on striking in the past. And that's really the most cost-effective way for these sort of remediation-type projects. And yes, they would have to shut down the road.
Cost now, if we look at it?
We, we didn't run a cost estimate for this one for that reason. We're just gonna put out a, a contract, probably not to exceed a total contract amount, and we can set a limit on it. But, but I didn't run a full number on this, at this point. It'll go out to public bid, and we'll let the public give us some bids and see what the numbers are, and maybe we'll have the ability to award based on that.
So you're saying we'll piecemeal this thing, a piece at a time?
No, no, no. An on-call contract, what that does is it allows us to put a menu of items that would take to construct this job. It would have all the permanent requirements to build the job. And what happens is you pay, essentially what you do is you have established price agreements, and then you pay them based on actual quantity of what they put in. So, it's, when, when we're talking about the piecemeal portion there, what we're talking about is, I just want everybody to understand that when you come in and you trench a road, and, and you pave it back, you're gonna have a nice black trench.
Pretty one.
You're gonna see a pretty one, and then on both sides, in this case, you'll have asphalt that's dilapidated.
Good way to look at it is build a drive-down mountain road. We did the same thing there. You can see what we pieced it, that one piece, all the way down mountain road. And that's, that's basically what we're talking about there.
I know there's some apartments along this route here, and...
The water up.
We're gonna be shutting down a lot of people at a time, you know? But, I mean, needs to be replaced.
Well, and they're having, they're having...
They're having to do that now, because they're having to go out and repair it. Everybody, so, that's happening on a regular basis now, so you might as well go in and do it right, so, because... What, yeah, what Mario was talking about is, is an on-call contractor, we can actually go out for an RFP and hire a contractor that would be able to do these small jobs, instead of going through a procurement process for every one of these small jobs, which ends up being very expensive on the, on the, on the front end. And this way, we can have an on-call budget, a X amount of dollars over, say, a year's time. So if we have these come up, then we can just call them, and they can come in and give us a price on the job. We'll have a good estimate on what it would be anyway.
The manager is correct, and I felt I gave you that piece of information. Traditionally speaking, there's a, there's a book that accompanies the bid, and that book, as a will of thumb, runs about thirty-five hundred dollars just to prepare it. So every time you're putting out a project to bid, you've gotta regenerate that specific book. If you do an on-call, then you've got a menu, and, and you pay once, and it's, and you can, procurement allows you to have it up to four years. And you can have established prices, and it's been competitively bid, and remediation projects like this, it makes good sense to use that sort of mechanism.
And that's the route, that's the route we'll go.
I agree.
Okay.
So Wayne, this is a problem area?
Yes, sir.
Is it as bad as Houston Street, was that street over there off the sage?
Yes.
That was a humdinger. We, we redid that whole road, guys, fifteen feet at a time.
I know this is in the early stages, Mario, but my concern is always is disrupting the, the access for the, for the public and the residents. So, we're gonna need to really look at that, because we're gonna have to shut down that entire area for that block on the top portion, along with the bottom, to where they don't have access to even go anywhere.
You've got that alley that'll go through the back there that services all those apartment buildings too. Right behind the Lauterburger there, that alley goes right down that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, starts over there, by the town of Country, goes all the way through, down past the Lauterburger.
Didn't you say the waterline just goes on one side of the street?
It's almost right in the middle.
It's actually in the middle.
It's almost right in the middle.
Just north of the, north side of the, the road.
For the center line?
Yeah. So in other words, that whole roadway is just gonna have to be shut down completely.
High Street's pretty wide, the other two are not as wide. I'll, we'll look at that, we'll look at that. The other two, for sure, I'm pretty confident the sewer will have to shut down.
This one we might be able to use one lane.
This one you might be able to, because it's, it's sort of excessively wide.
Yeah.
Pushed out to, not a lot of those people park on the side of the road like they do.
Right.
Do we know exactly what the amount, the distance that we're looking at?
That's, on the water, it's fifteen hundred feet.
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah, on the sanitary sewer for Pill Street was...
Thirty hundred and three hundred, right?
And Charles, just over three hundred.
Any other questions on that?
If you want, Mayor, I don't know if you wanna entertain that one now, and then I can move on to the next one, or totally up to you.
On this one here, we're gonna, we're gonna get the on-call contract.
Okay, and that's all we were just asking for, for feedback?
Yes, that's, that's, that's all we want there.
That's the direction we're taking?
Yes.
Well, I'm a little lost here, but I thought that we're coming late, but Pill Street, Jackson, you're doing this because why?
Um, Mayor, Counselor Sandoval, um, Pill Street, and I apologize, the memo shows Jackson, but we got clarification from OMI, and it's actually Charles Street, so it's not Jackson, it's Charles Street. Both of those streets have failing gravity sewers. And what's happening is just like we found on Santa Fe Avenue a few years ago and some of these other streets. The existing sewer is well over fifty years old, and it's petrified clay pipe, and the, the gases have eaten away over time. And now what you have in these streets are essentially just a cavity underground, a conduit that's, that's carrying the raw sewage. So there really is no pipe, and so we're coming in and putting in a new pipe.
So we're getting bids to do this work, is that what we're...
Yes, sir. We, we were asking discovery body to give us some direction as to...
What I wanna do here is I want to, someone, to make a motion that we go out to RFP for on-call contract, or on-call contractor to do these things.
We have, we have, Councilman Sandoval, we have, we have these small projects like this that come up, and they're coming up more and more.
We hadn't discussed it at all.
No, no, there hasn't been any discussion. And so, so we were, we were talking about, in, rather than doing a, a contract for each individual job, then what we wanted to do is get an on-call contractor that we can, that, that, that we will go through the procurement process to identify and hire. Then when we have these small projects come up, we don't have to keep re-going over, redoing the, the bid documents and all of that.
Yeah, it was like that on-call contractor that we got to split by street.
Yes, sir.
Very much, basically the same thing.
Exactly.
I was just wondering where the priority one, two, and three came from? Because, I mean, these aren't bad roads. I'm just curious, other, other ones, you've checked them all out?
Well, these ones here, these ones actually have collapsed sewer lines in the road that we have dug up, and we've seen that they're collapsed, and we've put a fix in them just to keep the sewage flowing through them right now.
Okay, and you can verify that with Wayne?
Oh, yes. I stood there and watched him dig them up.
One, I think, the one...
That's the first time I've heard this.
Yeah, this is the first time it's been brought up, but, but we just feel that, the only thing we're, we're, we wanna do tonight is just agree that we can go ahead and go out for RFP for a contractor, that's all, on-call contract. It's all, yeah.
Okay, then we just continue with different roads throughout the town?
Yes.
Yeah, you also have the ability to take that contract, you, once you go out to, to bid, and you get the bids in, and, and it'll come before council, with the letter of recommendation from the engineers to the apparently qualified little bidder. And then at that point in time, discovery body will direct the manager and staff, and then we'll, we'll, we're gonna, you may say, well, it's not Pill Street, it's this street. That's fine.
But on-call contractor, we'll cover that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the council will make that decision.
So on that note...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, I move that we proceed with our on-call engineer to, um, prepare the bid forms. And to requ, uh, for a request for bid, or do you want a request for proposal?
Request for proposal.
For bid.
They have for request for bid, request for bid, for an on-call contractor. Do I get a second?
I'll second that, I think that's a good idea.
Counselor Quintana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
That takes care of that one.
The next item on, item seven, College Road Bridge, again, just wanting to bring discovery body up to, to speak. Some of you are aware, and some of you, this'll be the first time. The, about eighteen months ago, I think it's been now, maybe close to a few years, we worked with FEMA. Went round and round over a course of nine months to take what they originally estimated at eleven thousand dollars, we appealed their estimate. And finally, we're able to get a funding agreement with them through the appeal process, and they gave us an amendment to the agreement. Today, you have a hundred and eight thousand, nine ninety-three in FEMA funding. The, there's, there's two alternatives, there are many alternatives, the two alternatives that we're recommending tonight for discovery body to consider, and again, just to provide direction to staff. One of the design alternatives is to replace College Road Bridge with the traditional standard bridge. It'll be similar to the one at Nimitz, a little smaller in span, but it would be open to, to the way you see the one there over the Rio San Jose. That's what we call a hundred-year design. We're estimating about nine hundred thousand. I wanna just clarify that the nine hundred thousand is total project budget that we've put together, and we have a detailed breakdown estimate on that. So when I say project versus construction, project is everything that goes into it, and all the planning, and all the engineering, all, uh, construction management, all the construction itself. That's a project budget that we're presenting. The fifty-year design would look at re, tearing out the existing structure as well, but putting back a covert-type bridge. And it would be designed to, to convey, to carry the fifty-year event underneath the roadway. It would be in a dip condition like the one you see now. It would be sized, that dip, what we call the crest, would be sized so they could pass a hundred-year flow on top. That, that complies with standard engineering practice, if we wanna go that way. The total project budget to do that is four hundred and thirty thousand. Keep in mind that either of these approaches or alternatives require you to, anything that you do now, once you touch it, you have to bring it up to current standards. So, when we're talking about a fifty-year design with the coverts, you're still talking about sidewalks, you're still talking about guardrail, you're still talking about ADA compliance and transitions, even though there's no sidewalks on College Road, but we've got a, we've got, that bridge design has to, has to meet the new standards. If you go to the hundred year, it's the same thing. So, those are, those are the, the alternatives that we wanted to present tonight, and, and the budgets, and we're really just asking council for, for direction.
So just, so design number one, with those concrete slope blankets that you guys are, they need to be in place, of course, but, how deep would those go beyond the surface of the, of the actual ground there where the Royal is at?
Um, the depth of the blanket, the toe, is based on what they call scour calculation.
Right.
We haven't done one for that particular area, that would be part of the design. My gut feeling tells me, just knowing sort of the areas down here, you're probably looking somewhere in the five-foot depth.
And the reason I'm asking that is just because of the terrain that's in that area. I mean, we've got a lot of sand, silt kinda, and one good rain through there, like we have.
Yes.
Could possibly, you know, mess that, that whole structure, you know, just from, just from the, the, oh, the flow, the flow of water. So, and then, and then design number two would actually be a, a bridge, and you're actually reconnaing the bridge, correct?
Yes, sir.
How much land is still available out there for future building?
There's still...
There's plenty.
How much that's gonna grow out there is what I'm asking.
Well, it's one of the places that can grow, yeah. It's one of the places that still has room to grow, um, and of course, out west.
How old is that existing cross?
Mike, you need to go look at that.
I saw it today.
Okay, it's, it's probably twenty years old, but it's been that way and deteriorating since I was in office eight years ago. I've been complaining about that bridge for eight years. Where we're at right now with this, guys, is I plan on putting this in the budget for next year, okay? Starting in July, me and Paul, we believe we've found the money to do this. And so, that's, that's what I'm looking at, guys.
Which is design one?
Design number one. It's, it's what we can afford. We don't have our nine hundred thousand, but we do have the three hundred and thirty-four thousand for RM to do this, without asking anybody for any help or anything else. And my point being is, with the floods that we've had here coming out of the west, then it came out of the north, those people that live out there are dealt with. Okay, they can't get out, we can't get into them, and we need to take care of that now.
And when it does, uh, when there is more water there, let's say more than a fifty-year event, water will flow over this new design?
Yes, it will. And it, and it has to be signed properly, designed properly, as Counselor Quintana pointed out there. You do have to have upstream and downstream treatments. The, the dip or the crests, we call it the low-water crossing, needs to be designed in such a manner that it's conducive to overflow.
This is minus the runway thousand, right?
From FEMA. Yeah, this is...
Yeah, uh...
Well, this is in my district, so I think we need to get this, this design number one, is I'm gonna support that. I think we, that's probably what we can afford as a, as a city right now, and, and move forward on it and get that, get that bridge built.
Go ahead, Paul.
Mario, we talked about possibly co-opting or, or partnership, partnering with the schools on it, since, since that's the only route in and out to get students to and from school. Is that still a possibility?
Mr. Manager, Mayor? It, it is. In the last conversation that we had, we talked about waiting until about September to approach superintendent, to, to talk about an MOU, and that the timing would be appropriate before January for a number of reasons. We've got a capital only that will be working, hopefully with the cog again, and, and bringing some of these priority projects. And with a partnership with the school district would be very, very beneficial, going to our legislators and looking at this potentially, if you decide to build this spring of next year, to look at other funding. To, also, we can apply for co-op money to the school district, but again, we need the MOU in place. The thought there is that we could fill out the application process for them, we could develop the MOU, and then you could act as a fiscal agent, and then take those dollars, because buses aren't going over there to, to pick up students. By, Mr. Manager, I, you know, we really hadn't approached the flood control district going into next year, so we could certainly approach them on this project as well.
That'll work, because the more money we give, then the less we have spin out of our general plan.
When you tear this out, where are you gonna reroute traffic to?
Right through the ditch.
Well, probably, we've done a similar project like this in the past. We can either build a temporary berm upstream or downstream. Typically, what we wanna do is, we'll time the construction so it's not during the rainy season, that's step number one. And number two, if we build a temporary berm, we could divert them and then build a structure, or what we can do is build a low-water crossing and then just put a base, gravel, gravel base, and let them just drive into the Royal, lay the slopes back, and that's probably gonna be the most cost-effective manner. So we'll look at those options for a design.
Go back to the colors. You get to the colors.
Forest Service, brother, you ain't going through there. Forest Service ain't gonna allow us to do that.
Isn't that over at the baseball field, Forest Service?
Yeah, but I'm talking about that, the color itself, there's an access right there.
Yeah, but that's Forest Service.
It used to be there long ago.
That's Forest Service land now, and they're...
I, I thought theirs was in, within the fence to...
It's from the fence to the bottom of the mesa, Eddie. It goes from the fence to the bottom of the mesa. They own that whole section there, and...
Even though it's not fenced off?
Even though it's not fenced off. And I guarantee you, yeah, I have.
I didn't put it on my agenda today, but we can, I, I, maybe when we're done here, I can brief on where that's...
I mean, this is as a temporary access.
Well, the, the concern, Counselor Sandoval, is that, um, we have to, so part of the cost, this project cost, has an environmental clearance component to it. And Counselor Quintana, you know that any time our footprint is, whether it's temporary or permanent, we have to describe that area disturbance. So if you start pushing vehicles into federal property, being environmental becomes a real challenge, and that's the largest hurdle. Takes most time and costs the most money. So we really wouldn't advise pushing them into federal lands.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I was gonna, I had a one with the deadline on the MOP. Can get that, is there, is there a deadline that we need to, so that we can kind of take these steps, so we can make sure, ensure that this stuff could be...
For, for the map, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so going back to the manager's original question, the timing would be to get an MOU started in September, have it executed by the end of the year of this year, with the school district, and then the solicitation letters generally come out second week of January. And then we have till about March fifteenth, has always been the deadline, so we have a two-month, from mid-January to mid-March, to submit for both the co-op and the map. So as long as we can stick to that MOU this, this late year, and get that executed by December, then it positions us for...
Right, and that's what I'd like to see happen, because I don't want it to fall through anything, you know, because we, because we missed a deadline, and then we have to wait the following year to let, you know, to kind of keep pushing things...
Absolutely.
Forward, so I think that's real critical in this useful situation.
Yes, sir.
Who's responsible if we get a fifty-year flood during the construction?
So what happens is, in the construction documents... So what happens is, in the construction documents, number one, we're going to set the schedule to where we work, we're not building in the middle of July in office.
Yeah.
Outside of that, as part of the contract documents, we have what they call water diversion. So you have a bid out and in there, the contractor has to protect their work. If you have.
So the contractor's responsible?
Yes, with the exception that within all of these standard owner-to-contractor contracts, agreements, there is a clause for act of God. So if you had an act of God, something that was unusual, then the contractor does have the right to come back and ask for any level of compensation. So I just want to make that very clear. Any other questions?
And they have this on-time schedule, if they actually get it, there's a late fee if they don't finish on time?
We can, we can do liquidated damages as part of the, as part of the contract, if that's something that this council would like to put into the contract.
I think with the bridge, that's appropriate.
Okay.
I mean, we've got, we're going to be cutting, we're going to be affecting, you know, whatever it is, two-hundred people out there every day coming and going. So if the contractor is two months late, it affects a lot of people in a lot of different ways.
Yes.
And our emergency vehicles.
Right, so Eric, we'll just make sure we have liquidated damages in the.
Mayor, I move that we instruct our, I'll call engineer to proceed with design alternative number one.
I'll second that.
Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Next, Radio Street. Anybody from Radio Street here tonight? Man, they showed up when we were giving them the money. Now that we're doing the work, they don't show up no more. Go ahead, Mario.
Mayor, Council, on Radio Street, we had, as part of the ongoing coordination with the CAG, a couple of months ago, I went ahead and put together a description of scope of work for environmental review and permitting. And we went and sent those out to three qualified companies that can provide those services. You should have within your packet a recommendation letter that identifies the three companies, their prices, and the recommendation of word to Merritt and Associates.
That's correct. We discussed this, I believe it was the last meeting.
Yes, we did. So let's go ahead and do this one.
Let's do it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept Merritt and Associates?
Fourteen thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six, twenty-six, excluding tax.
Second?
Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Second Street.
Second Street, again, we, in the earlier slide, we were showing you kind of that next project that we're looking at as a whole between High Street and the Real San Jose. The city has a total, total budget today of seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. The handout that was provided to you gives you a breakdown of where the funding is, the four different funding sources on that end. Caporalle, previous year of two-fifty-nine, commitment with the last mayor when we presented in 2013 of a hundred thousand from the Real San Jose. The city has not received that money yet, and I did put a call in to Cynthia Spideau today before lunch, so hopefully I'll get a call back there so that we can put in a request to go ahead and release the funds now as the city's getting prepared to move forward. You've got a co-op for a hundred-and-sixty thousand, and then finally, this year, your legislators awarded two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. That funding agreement should make its way down here sometime in July, August, for a total again of seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. I do want to just impress that the seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand will not construct from High Street all the way to the Real San Jose. We're fine-tuning the limits now to get a pretty close idea of how far we think we can build, but we are going to be starting in High Street, working our way north. The nice thing about it is although we have water and sewer replacement within the project, we do not have storm drain in the first, oh, about, what, six-hundred feet, Eric? So that brings the cost down a little bit as we're working into there. But one of the things that we do need to do is, at a minimum, we're going to build a full roadway section for a few hundred feet, and then we're going to carry the storm drain, and we're going to have a trench where we finish all the way to the Real San Jose, because we have to bleed that storm drain out. So we're going to build you a nice section of road, a nice segment, and then as part of the seven-forty-four, we're taking the rest of the storm drain out. Again.
And then once that storm drains in, then we could just cover it, right? Because we'll have water, we'll have storm drain, we'll have sewer all in the ground then, right?
You won't be able to build all the sewer and water all the way to the Real San Jose right now. We're going to build as much as we can with seven-forty-four.
We already did the water line.
All on the backside, that's right, we did.
Already did the water line.
That's right, we only need sewer, and we're camera, we're cameraing the sewer.
Yes, because we already did the water line all the way down, okay?
So we should be able to build a pretty long stretch.
Yes.
The, although not part of this information here, we do have a meeting in Santa Fe tomorrow with the Water Trust Board. We're making a three-minute presentation, that's all they give us, we've already given them the handouts, and we've got a package there to replace the bridge. So that'll be our hearing tomorrow, and hopefully that goes well. So if it does, we'll be coming back at the end of the year, hopefully increasing the project.
I don't see streetlights on here, no streetlights?
We will put the infrastructure. We will not put up the streetlights as part of this unless this governing body directs staff otherwise. Typically, what we'll do is we'll run the conduits, we'll put the J-boxes in, and at some future date, when the entire roadway is done, then you have the ability to pull all the wire, set your bases and set your streetlights. But right now, we're not, we're not planning on that unless we're directed otherwise.
Right now, we don't have the money for that, so we're going to put it in as we go, okay?
Well, if the kindu is there, all we'd have to do is four pads and.
Light, yeah. Put the lights in. Yeah, you won't have to tear the road again, you'll be able to slip all the.
Slip electric.
That's good. Any other questions?
So tonight, all we're requesting is, as we're finalizing design and we're going to be going for certifications, because there is DOT funding in this case, we have, there's some permitting requirements with the DOT, there's five certifications. As we get through that in May, we were just asking tonight that this governing body approve for us to go out to bid contention on DOT certifications and approvals.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct Wilson and Company to move forward with this second street project.
Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mario.
Thank you, please.
Next, golf carts.
We'll have Manny's here tonight to give us a little report on, you know, need for the carts and some of the tournaments and things that he has out at the golf course and things, so why don't, you can go ahead and come up. Manny?
Yeah, right now, we have, we have a fleet of sixty golf carts, and we have about thirty-nine of them that can make eighteen holes, actually make eighteen holes, and the rest that I have in there just can't make it. So when I have a big tournament or a busy weekend, I can't accommodate the people that go out there. That's my situation with the golf carts.
What are the twenty, what do the other twenty golf carts need?
Well, the batteries are, you know, the batteries are, they won't make it, they'll make maybe nine holes at the most, and pretty soon, the rest of them are just going to start doing that also.
How long, how long has it been?
Five years.
Five years since we, since we did this last time. Guys, where I'm at with this is I think we just need to pay and buy the golf carts, and then we put the batteries in them and we maintain them. Forty-eight thousand dollars a year for golf carts, to me, is, it's just beyond me, okay? We don't spend that on our youth, we don't spend that on any of our youth in this town, on anything that we do with our kids. We make the parents pay it all, and the city of grants is going to pay forty-eight thousand dollars a year for golf carts. All of our other parks, and this does include our cemetery, is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to maintain these. We budget over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand for golf carts. I'm just, I'm against going into another lease for two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars over five years. That's where I stand on this.
Is the maintenance of the golf carts going to fall upon the crew all used to handle, or are we going to hire a new person?
Yeah, I gave you, I gave you the breakdown of what the cost of maintenance would be on the golf carts compared to leasing the golf carts, and those numbers that I gave you, I'm not even sure that we can do that for that price on the maintenance. We will have to hire someone else. Sixty more pieces of equipment is not going to be able to be maintained by our current mechanic out there. He's, all he can do to maintain the carts that he does. There's really not anybody that maintains their golf carts, but the reason is it's so much more cost-effective to lease them, because then we have no maintenance on them, they're under warranty, and so our only cost is the lease of them. I think it was put in the paper wrongly last week that we do maintain the golf carts, but we don't do the maintenance on them, they are under warranty. And I had another conversation with an individual today that I talked to about the parks who has been involved with, in the golf course business for a long time, and he brought it, and what he told me is, he said he worked for American Golf for quite a few years, and American Golf is a private company that runs golf courses. And he said that everything that they do is based on dollars, profits in dollars. And they found that not only does, is it more cost-effective to lease the carts, but it's also more cost-effective to lease than moving equipment, because the cost of maintenance with labor and parts is just outweighs, outweighs the cost of the, of the, of the carts. And so, I mean, if I thought for one minute that we would save money maintaining the golf carts, that's what we do, we do.
I want to comment real quick, and what it is, is that we've never had to maintain golf carts, so we don't even know what it entails. That's one problem that I have, okay? Having somebody employed to do this, don't have any idea, don't have, don't have any idea how much breaks down, that kind of thing. If we're already having issues with batteries, those kind of things, wear and tear, tires, the seats, then again, we don't want things starting to look crappy, because we have a good golf, we have a nice golf course out there that attracts a lot of people to our town, from Gallup, Albuquerque, Akuma, Laguna, and our local, local people.
Manny, what is that tournament you have coming up in May now where you have a hundred-and-twenty players coming down?
A hundred-and-twenty, yeah, it's that great, this is a golf tournament, and they have a hundred-and-twenty, so.
And these, this is an out-of-town group that comes in here?
Some are from out-of-town, a lot of Albuquerque people, but then also, the week before that, we also have the Family Center Tournament, and that's a big one also, so.
If we don't, if we don't do the maintenance on these, why are twenty of them not working?
Right.
It's just the batteries, I mean, they're, they're fine, it's just the batteries just.
Yeah, but they're under warranty.
They're under warranty. The company's not coming in and replacing them?
No.
It seems like they should all be a hundred percent working.
And this is the thing, see, because, because the golf carts don't break down during the four or five year, actually, what do they last? They last about four and a half years, don't they? It's about four and a half years that they last. During that time, you just don't have any maintenance on them. We just, we just don't. And, but after that time, then they're all maintenance.
But if it's just the battery, if they're under warranty, they should be replaced.
Well, the batteries.
They shouldn't break down, you can now do the battery.
Well, I guess you misunderstood me. The thing is, is that during that, the time of the lease for the four and a half years, we don't have it to do any maintenance on them because they don't break down. The batteries are good, you know, we have very few problems with it, the tires are new, the cables, everything is new, so we don't have the maintenance. They are under warranty for certain items, right? The batteries is not one of them.
Not one of them.
But the batteries last for four to four and a half years, so we don't have to put those, we don't have to put them in there. But now we would, in the next, in the next year, we would have to spend, it's a thousand dollars a cart to put them in, that's sixty thousand dollars. We have to pay off the lease that we have now, that's forty-five, that's a hundred-and-five thousand. We have to hire somebody, and even if we hire somebody at only nine dollars an hour, about seventeen thousand dollars a year, when you add in another eight thousand dollars in benefits, we're looking at about twenty-six thousand dollars there. So now you're up to a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. Then you have to have a little bit in your budget, and I'm only budgeting six thousand dollars more, which is only a hundred dollars a cart for the first year in other, in other maintenance items in there. The parts for these golf carts are very expensive, and.
Apparently, they don't, they don't fix nothing, because we've got thirty of them down.
Just the batteries.
It's just the batteries.
It's the batteries down.
Well, there is.
Paul, a couple of things.
It's the batteries that we pay for.
I have a couple of questions regarding the lease. Now, one of the questions, I did a lot of research on this, and one of the questions that I came up with was, the lease, why do we have to lease to buy? Why can't we just lease? That's an option that I want, I want to be looked at.
Yeah, I did, we did look at that.
Or you might be. Lease refurbished ones.
We, we talked about, we talked about, we talked about leasing, we talked about leasing, a straight lease and a lease-to-buy, but this is the only, the only thing that they do. This is the only thing they offer.
Well, they don't do anything, basically, they don't, they don't fix them, we pay our own insurance, they don't maintain nothing, they just.
Yeah, okay, I had another thing though, real quick, because I, I mean, just, one more thing that I, that I looked into was, like Manny mentioned, we have, we have twenty to thirty golf carts that are pretty much hitting their peak of not being operable, okay? I don't know what the next, what the other thirty, forty are going to do, nobody knows. What I was tossing around is why do we have to go, another option we could look at is why do we have to buy all sixty? Can't we just buy thirty and leave the good thirty? We've never seen the problem that happens, we've never maintained or put any maintenance into any of them, so none of us know what's going to happen. And I'd like to see if we're going to do that, we're going to put maintenance into some of these golf carts. We need to go through a little train phase of this to see if it's going to be cost-efficient for us.
Well, we have to pay the forty-five thousand anyway.
Sure.
So why not try it for a year? If it doesn't work out, we'll go to a lease again.
Before you came, we just hired another mechanic.
And that's my point.
We didn't have.
That's what I was going to say.
We didn't have a third mechanic.
You don't have to hire another guy to do this.
Yeah, we just hired a third mechanic.
We don't have to hire another guy.
And why can't we bring somebody from our motor?
Exactly, another third one that we just hired. There's just a more, there's a better way to do this, and my point being is, we've got this town that is falling apart, our infrastructure is falling apart, and we continue to throw eight-hundred thousand dollars a year out there at the golf course, okay? And I mean, when it was originally set up, where the employees played free, the politicians played free, it was a health issue. It was so that you went out there and you walked the golf course. You didn't ride around in a golf cart, it was for your health, that's why you were allowed to play for free. My point being here, guys, is, is the budget out there has got to be cut. We spend too much money at that golf course. And when you include the lawsuits and the crap smell that I was smelling last night as we were watering the golf course, the cost goes up to millions instead of just, I mean, how much money do we make a month off golf carts?
We bring in a little over, right around a hundred thousand dollars on average, a little, well, a little more than that. Over five, the last five years, we brought in five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
And that's not true, because at the end of the year, we've supplemented the golf course with eighty-nine thousand one year, a hundred-and-twelve thousand one year at the end of the year to make things match out there. So that, that doesn't jive for me either, okay? If it's making a hundred thousand, then we're only seven-hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
No, you misunderstood me. The rental of the golf carts brings in a little more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. The rental, that's what I'm talking about, the rental amount.
Okay, so that.
So once our lease is done, we'll be making a hundred thousand dollars a year on the cart.
Yes.
We'll be spending more than that on maintenance.
I don't believe that. If we're going to spend more than forty-eight thousand dollars a year on maintenance on golf carts, then we do not need that.
Well, thirty of them are sitting there rotting, right? Because they're not.
Okay, and then another thing, guys, cutting back and not putting the money out there at the golf course, there's, look at the shape that Gallup's in. I don't know if you guys been out there, it's terrible. Well, that's where we're getting everybody from that area to come and play golf over here. Because they cut back, they cut back on all of their funding, and now their golf course doesn't even look like a golf course.
Our water infrastructure is about 60 years old, we have a gas in most of these places in town. We have water breaks, Wade knows, every other day. And that's where we need to be putting our money in our infrastructure, not in our golf.
These people that, these people that come and have tournaments here, they, they can choose where they, where they have their tournaments. And if we're not able to accommodate them, then they'll go elsewhere.
You're right, Paul.
That's what's gonna happen.
You're right. You just saw a video of.
I thought we were trying to bring people into our community. I thought we were trying to bring economic benefits into our community.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish, okay? Those golf carts are free.
To me.
That's right.
You gotta rent them.
To me, it's, it's ridiculous, that's one of our attractions to our town.
One of our best attractions.
One of our best attractions, you know what? You guys don't see, I go out there and I see the people that are brought in. I, I see the people that I don't even know that are coming in from Albuquerque, Gallup, Laguna for that matter, just to come and spend their money here in our town. So there, there's a lot of positive to this, yes, there's some money that we're, we're spending like, we're saying that it's not efficient enough. I don't believe that.
It's not efficient at all.
Well, you know what, then let's close it down, how about that?
Well, here's, here's a better idea, here's a better idea. Okay, check it out, guys, hang on. Here, here's what I plan to do when Manny's contract comes up with on course, okay? I plan to lease that golf course, guys. We're gonna lease that sucker for 250,000, 300,000 dollars, where we will pay someone to run the golf course. You can make all the money you want to off the liquor license, the restaurant, your greens fees, whatever. And then you take the golf course, and that includes the employees and everything else. We'll absorb the employees that we can, the ones we can't, we will lay off. Because the amount of money that we're spending out there compared to what is going on in our town with our roads, our infrastructure, our sewer lines that are pumping sewer into the ground instead of going to our wastewater treatment plant, that's where our priorities need to lie, and that's where my priorities lie. Do I wanna close the golf course? No, but it needs to be more efficient than us sending 800, 900, a million dollars out there a year. And it's bringing in 100,000, so that means that we're only 800,000 in the hole, 700,000 in the hole, instead of the whole 900,000. That's where I'm at with this, guys.
So how much are the baseball parks bringing in?
It depends, it depends on if we get a tournament just like you guys.
I'm a taxpayer here, and I wanna keep my money here.
Okay.
I think things can remain the same as they are out there. We can pay this last payment, we can try it for a year to maintain these things, and, and believe it or not, there'll be more golf carts running once we take over. Because we'll get those 20 carts, batteries in those 20 carts. And if we establish a log, a maintenance log, and have one of our people go out there once every two weeks, more than what these guys are doing now, then our golf carts should actually be in better shape.
I mean, here's something about you saying taxpayers, Rob, that's something that we might wanna do too then, is put it to the taxpayers, and let the taxpayers vote on it in 2016 when these two gentlemen's seat comes up. And let the people of this town decide. Because I know, when I was running for office, this is one of the things that I ran on. And obviously, that's what the people want, because I won by a landslide. And this is one of the things I ran on, is accountability at the golf course, accountability at the police department, accountability throughout this city.
Well, I, I, the golf course is a beautiful golf course, we appreciate everything you guys are doing, and the golf course is running well. I think that this is a smaller issue than we're making of it. There's, there's no harm in us just paying this last payment, try it for a year, if it doesn't work, we'll go back to the lease and we'll get a whole new fleet. And those things will last another year, and it won't cost that much money to get these other carts up and running with new batteries. And if it doesn't work, we can, we can, we can go a different direction any year from now. If it's working great, then we're making money.
There's no reason why it wouldn't work.
That's right.
It's not try it for a year, it's just do it.
To make it work.
At a degree, and you said to have the third mechanic that can send over the.
To help out, to change the battery. On that note.
Well, look, wait, look at this, this paper that I ran, that these carts are supposed to last 20 to 30 years.
Yeah, 20 to 30 years, not five.
Not five years, I mean, what condition would be after 40 years?
Use a cart that's been 40 years.
As opposed to the condition they are now, in five years.
Well, they're in good condition now.
If they're kept up, if there's a good maintenance program.
When I put out a, when I put out a golf cart and it's got the windshield, and then I have some that don't have a windshield, golfers, they'll load up and then they'll notice that there's no windshield, so then they'll put some that have the windshield, and that's just through years of, you know, a ball hit it. Anyway, didn't have a windshield, so they don't want the one without the windshield.
Well, then that's for the windshield.
And if these guys are supposedly.
It's gonna cost a lot of money to, to get them all up.
I mean, how often, I mean, they don't use, they don't go out there.
So they take all windshields out?
They don't go out there to abuse them, they go out there to use them, to get them from one golden mech. I don't think they go out there to abuse them.
And he should go visit the golf course a little more often.
Yeah, yeah, come out there.
This is a public course, guys, we get, we can, anybody can use those golf carts. All they gotta do is come and rent them from Manny. Now, what they do out there, Manny can only monitor so much of that course, he can't see everything. I've seen from my own eyes and reported it to Manny, the abuse that those things take. And I'm not saying that they're not, they're not, you can't use them for 20 years, but they do take abuse. It's just not what you think, drive up to where you're gonna hit the ball next and get back in and just, no.
Yeah, but they're made to last 20 years.
If you want, well, a first class operation, you wanna have some new carts, provide new carts.
You guys remember this, this is, how many, how many state tournaments have we attracted here, Manny? High school, okay? Yeah, we have.
We have had one, a high school tournament, and I think Seth is working on it.
Hang on, Seth, one sec, you one second.
We didn't, we didn't, we have a state tournament though?
Yeah, we do.
We had a state tournament here, guys, do you know what that entails? That's bringing several schools and families to our town. Now, in order.
We have to go to state baseball tournaments, Michael.
Ruben, that's not as big.
Ruben.
But let me finish, okay? What it does is it brings many people into our town, okay? Now, in order to meet the criteria for them to come to play golf here, you gotta have a nice facility.
We, we're still gonna have golf carts.
And we're still gonna have a nice facility.
No, I'm not saying that we're not, all I'm saying is that's, that's what the NMA looks at when they, when they go to places. They look at to see what we have.
We're still gonna have a nice facility, we're still gonna have 60 golf carts. We're just not gonna spend 48,000 dollars on a new lease, 275,000 dollars over five years. And there's no way anybody's gonna convince me that it's gonna cost that to maintain those golf carts over five years. If the batteries last four and a half to five years, that's 60,000 dollars, bang, there's no more cost for batteries for four to five years.
We're lacking mechanical accountability, so we're lacking.
That's it.
Morty, you're saying 275,000 dollars a year, but those golf carts pay for themselves.
No, they don't, not the re-budget, the re-budget 800,000 dollars a year out there.
I'm talking about the golf carts, not talking about the whole golf course.
I'm talking about the whole golf course, Rob.
Ruben say 20 years on a golf cart, it does last if you own it.
And we're gonna own them.
We're gonna own them.
No, 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 I'm talking about an individual. If I own my own golf cart, it's gonna last me 30 years. If I go rent it, it may last two months.
Because you're gonna maintain it, that's why. We just need someone to maintain.
Yeah, but am I gonna maintain every one I rent up there?
No.
Make it last 20 years?
No, the city will.
I've seen those golf carts, and they're in pretty good shape. And if they only need batteries, then I think that we can try it a year, that's what I said.
Seth, your turn, what do you got to say, step up to the mic.
I, I just wanted to say that I know we're looking at finances, we're looking at materials, we're looking at long range, but that golf course for me provides an avenue for our youth to, to learn integrity, to learn honesty, to learn all these traits that we are trying to build in the golfing, you know, code. I mean, when we go out there, there's honesty about how you play, there, there's looking after each other, helping each other take account of, of your score. And, and these kids that are kids from the high school, and some from the middle school sometimes, when the eighth graders come in and wanna play, is, is part of the program. But when we have them here in a tournament, we want, whatever the argument might be, we want the parents, we want the grandparents. We have grandparents who follow their kids around constantly throughout the tournaments, we have their parents there. So we want this to look good, we want this to be attractive.
Question.
Yes.
Don't the high school kids walk when they play golf?
They do, but their parents.
They walk all the way, right?
But the, the parents, the, the kids are also, you know, they're 15, 16, 17, 18 years old. They're lugging around, you know, 20 pounds worth of, well, maybe not 15 pounds worth of.
We're not too big of them, guys.
But, but what we're saying is, is I walk as much as I, I can. But every now and then, when I'm playing in a tournament, you're gonna jump in a cart because the speed of play is something that we wanna maintain. So that the, when the tournament's over, you know, the people who are not in the tournament can play that afternoon. So speed of play is an important thing when we have that going on. In high school, we try to get, you know, a tournament in five to six hours worth of, of playtime for the tournament. But once again, it's not so much about that for me as it is, how can I help my kids do better? How can I have them have the integrity, and also have them be proud of their golf course? Yesterday, we had a high school tournament there. And, you know, the, the coaches came to me and said, tell Manny we sure hope that he gets the bid for state to do in the state rotation, because this is an ideal location. We have restaurants like we talked about the last time, we have hotels, we have, you know, nice places to be. So when we do the state tournament, and it's a three day event, you know, that we have all this, you know, other things up here to entertain people while they're here, not just play golf. Because they're not gonna come in here and watch their kids play for six hours and then go sit in a hotel room. They're gonna go look around, they're gonna go see things, they're gonna do things. And so, part of it is, is the, you know, the pleasure of, of the whole atmosphere that we're creating. And I know we talked about potential retirement, it, you know, when you, when people come in and they look at the various items, you know, I think we should have, you know, a, a visual effect on them. But once again, my concern is about the, of the golf team and the kids that we are, we're supporting. And that's the key.
I don't think the quality of the golf course or the, is gonna change. We have a great golf course, I think those things out there are gonna remain the same. But I think the quality of our carts is gonna go up when we take over.
Yeah, because there's gonna be more accountability, you know, they're not gonna beat 30 of them down.
Yeah, they're gonna be five years old, but if they have a 20 year life and all we have to do is replace batteries, then let's, like I said, try it for a year, what's wrong with that?
There's more than batteries on a golf cart, I give them to you.
And I understand that, huh? But there's no reason that it should cost 48,000 dollars a year to maintain them golf carts. There's no way anybody's gonna convince me of that.
And you can't maintain them for that much.
We're gonna find out.
Is this an action item there?
Yes, it is, and I will accept a motion if somebody wants to motion for the lease.
Let's try that one first.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and go forward with the lease under my, my recommendation of possibly going that one year and giving it a trial.
Well, we can't lease them for a year.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is I would like to see us leave that open on the one year trial basis, and then go forward, if that doesn't work, let's go ahead and go forward with the lease, like you had mentioned.
This is, so your motion is to.
The motion is to accept the lease for five years or not, guys. Okay, we're either gonna renew the lease, or we're not gonna renew the lease. That's where we're at, there's no one year contingent or any of that. We'll look at it in a year when we get there, okay? But right now, tonight, the motion is we either renew a lease or we don't. And we make the balloon payment and we own our golf carts and we go from there.
I'm saying promotion that we make the balloon payment and own the golf carts.
I'll entertain a second to that.
I'll say, I'll say.
Counselor Quintana?
No.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
There it is, no new lease on golf carts.
But there should be much more discussion.
You bet you, you bet you, as we go through this next year, and we'll maintain them, and we'll look at the cost, and as we go through this, and another year, we might go ahead and go back and lease them.
But we have to get a mechanic, we have to get a mechanic to.
I mean, there's just, we, we can do this, guys, we can do this, and that's a cost that's no longer going out. And I know we can do this.
What, what exactly, Manny, what, what exactly do the, who's the mechanic over there now? Joe Delano is our mechanic.
Joe Delano, the person at the golf course.
Okay, how, and how is he qualified to be a mechanic?
Well, the one thing is, what, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? You're gonna not do the lease, what are we doing with the batteries, are we gonna get them right away?
Yeah, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll order. We're gonna, we're, we're, we need you to make a, you'll have to get three bids, but I also need you to make a list of all the other parts that need to be replaced on them.
How long have they, they been down?
All the carts are running, all the carts are running, just some that won't make, they go, they won't make 18.
And we didn't wanna put in batteries before we knew. We didn't wanna pay back, to put batteries in them now, thinking that we were gonna go into a new lease, we didn't wanna spend that money on them.
Yeah, that one's been costing.
Yeah, that's why, that's why. Right, right, and we didn't, and we didn't put batteries in it because we were looking at doing a new lease, so we didn't wanna spend the money.
And that's it, now we have to maintain the whole unit, not just the battery.
Right, 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 the whole unit.
And I would recommend that we find out how to test these batteries, get somebody out there to test them, rather than just, you know, wow, this has got a, a broken windshield, let's replace it. You know, let's, let's have our mechanics go out there and, and, and know what kind of equipment we need to test these batteries and, and make sure that we're replacing batteries that need to be replaced, and not just replacing batteries.
Well, yeah, because you can't just put ordinary, ordinary water in a battery, do anything else to it.
We need some training.
Specific gravity of the batteries, and if not, the whole.
We're still battery, right?
I haven't seen the batteries.
They're pretty sure they're still batteries, so you wouldn't put water in them.
Okay, next item, planning and zoning recommendations, Morty. On this one here, I wanted these on my next meeting, not tonight. I want streamlined application from you for a conditional use permit for everything. I mean, for special permits, for parties, for the bike rally, for the concerts we're gonna have, for the farmer's market. And if it's something that you have to get into the state, say five days in advance, you get your paperwork in and we'll deal with our citizens on that Friday that we have the event. See what I'm saying? This is the direction I want you to go in. We are gonna start helping instead of hurting. We're gonna start moving forward instead of hindering and slowing down, okay? So what I'm looking for from you is a streamlined process on all of our permitting, especially our special permits for the bike rally, the quad, the farmer's market, the concerts we're gonna have, the Easter egg hunt. I want these things where they can be done in one day. The entire permit done in one day. And like I said, if it's something like the arc crawl on Santa Fe Avenue, where the state has to have five days' notice, then you'll put in your notice five days in advance, and our citizens will do it as it comes to the event. See what I'm saying?
So, I discussed this with the city manager last week, and what I've been doing is I've been putting together all the ordinances and everything that creates each one of the situation, so that I can present to you guys and let you guys go ahead and, and I'll, I'll, I'll present what I would suggest.
I want to see the old permitting, and I want to see the new permitting, the streamlined one, okay? Because it's like I said, there's these four letter words, hurt, and that's what we've been doing. We've been hurting our, our people and our process instead of helping, okay? And I don't care if it's a building teardowns, or if it's in the Fourth of July, or the quad, or whatever it is. Instead of helping get these things done, we're hurting it and we're slowing it down. And I don't want that no more, no more hindering, no more, let's find a reason why we can do something instead of a reason that we cannot, see what I'm saying? And, and, yes, and the codes, and this is something you've got to realize, all of our codes are interpreted in favor of the city, okay? And that's the way we need to interpret it, is in favor of the city. And if someone sues us, well, then we'll face up there and round and we'll defend ourselves, okay? Do you understand what, what we want from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay? And then once we get that process, we'll go back to your planning and zoning board, and they can argue, and, and we'll get it done. But this is what I want you to preserve, to the council, for all of us to look at. Is the old one, the new one, and, and how we're gonna help people tear down buildings, how we're gonna help people clean their yards, how we're gonna help them get a farmer's market permit, a permit for the concerts, okay? And like I said, if we have to have a five day notice with the state, then that's on you, it's not on our citizens. Our citizens will come to you and the city the day that the event has to be done, but we're getting it done.
Generally with the state, they require thirty days?
Whatever it takes, okay? All I want from you is how to help our public get things done in one or two days instead of it taking thirty days, forty days, okay?
No problem, uh, just for the record, uh, what basically what we've done or we try to focus on is to cover the city liability aspects.
And I understand that.
So that's what it's about, we, we plan for the worst and we hope for the best.
And, and let's start planning for the best.
And hoping for the worst.
No, and don't ever hope for the worst, pray for the best, too.
No, I agree.
You know, and, and let's just, because there's gotta be a way. I mean, when, when I'm told, when I'm running for the campaign, that the quad almost didn't happen this last year, our thirty-first quad almost didn't happen, I draw a problem with that, okay? For thirty-one years, we've been doing this and I hope to continue it for another thirty-one years minimum. And it's got to be, as Ruben said, user-friendly. Believe it or not, I got a tablet, guys, and I'm figuring it out, Google is a wonderful thing, okay? And, I mean, so, yes, user-friendly, okay? Help, not hurt, push forward, not hinder, not slow down the process. And I mean, it's gonna put a lot on you, but, baby, that's why you got ten thousand dollar raise and that's why we pay you money.
That works.
Okay? And on that note, guys, um, number eleven is done, it doesn't require any action.
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead.
Marty, Marty, you, you've always done really good work on paperwork. I know you can do that.
We know you've got it, man.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I'll play the first.
Nobody can bind you, mind you, but you did a hell of a job.
Very big work. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. The next one we have, advisory board appointments. Um, Denise, what do you got on this? I got one paper here. She wants to be put back on the animal board?
Yes.
Um, Denise Cornet, she currently serves, she wants to be re-placed on this board and I will accept a motion to accept her on the animal board.
One second.
I need a first.
I'll make a motion. I second.
There we go. Counselor Quintana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, that's that, bang. Um, anybody on the airport advisory board? We need three seats, is that what you're telling me, or two seats?
No, actually, that's a list of all the members, we just need to reorganize them.
So what we're gonna do with this list is we're gonna have three two-year terms and two four-year terms.
Yes, I need to know which ones you wanna place where and that way they can be organized and have dates instead of just kinda being thrown in there.
Is there anybody out there from the animal, airport advisory board now?
Shouldn't they make that decision, sir?
Yes.
Well, they're, they're created by ordinance and their terms are supposed to be staggered. Right now, um, we had such a high overturn two years ago that they were all appointed at the same time and none of them have a date.
Get with these people, Denise, and, uh, see who wants the two-year terms, who wants the four-year terms? And who wants the la, the large term, whatever it is? And bring this back to us at our next meeting and we'll approve this.
Okay.
Okay? And if there's anybody out there that wants to serve on the airport board or the animal board, we do need body. Please. Okay. Next, Rogers Tax Ordinance. Denise, are you doing this one?
Sure. Uh, basically what she did is she updated it to, uh, meet state codes, state standards. Um, everything complies with state statute. The only change that the board requested was that it has a, has the language in there that if a person misses more than three meetings in a year, they can be overturned by court and someone else can be brought in.
By the board or by us?
By us.
By themselves.
Did they add that, they added that in, in the?
Yes.
You mean the board will appoint a new tax?
No, 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 the board will vote them out if they miss more than three and then it would be up to you to replace them.
Or the mayor could remove them.
Or the mayor can remove them at any time, they don't have to miss anything.
This has been an ongoing problem and I'd like us straight down.
That'll work. I'll entertain a motion to accept this ordinance.
I make a motion to accept this ordinance.
Fourteen, twelve oh four.
One second.
Counselor Quintana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Um, I don't think we needed an executive session, right? Anybody, guys, need for an executive session? No executive session tonight? Manny, did you have something? I see you with your hand up in the back.
No, I'm fine.
You sure?
Well, I was gonna say that before we develop our children events, we used to always get together to the parks of recreation and we would ask them to, to let us use the parks. They would let us use the parks, we never went to any, anything about any ordinance or, or anything else.
That's what we're trying to get back to, Manny, okay?
Before I left, but we used to just at the park.
The parks know what they're being used for and if they're open or not, yes, that's exactly what we're trying to get back to, guys.
And the only thing they said is, why don't you, you don't run over a sprinkler.
More user-friendly. Council comments, Counselor Quintana?
A couple of things and actually, um, Manny, uh, props to, to Main Street for the Easter egg hunt. I, there's a lot of, uh, positive comments of, of what took place on Sunday. Thank you very much. Uh, I heard the kids really enjoyed it.
Thank you, make your support.
And then, uh, on the other note, uh, the cemetery's really looking, coming along very well, Wayne.
Thank you.
So just tell the guys to keep up their work and watch out for those headstones, okay?
Yes, sir.
And that's all, that's all I got.
Ruben? Uh, I'd like to, uh, say that those people that were waiting since July finally got their feedback today. That was good, uh, they were getting all kinds of compliments because they were whizzing last Peters on, uh, on, on East Sage. And I'd also like Paul, Paul, for you to look into a, a franchise agreement that we, that Bob started get, got going when we got in here. It was never finished and that was with the gas company, the Mexico Gas Company. For some reason, we never got it, they never signed off on it because it was something to do with, uh, they didn't wanna repair the, the road after they dug it up and had a leak somewhere or whatever they were working on, they're lying in the middle of the road. So we need to look into that and find out, uh, if we can get that closed, so we decided getting that money from there. Right now, we're not getting it, and there's a lot of money involved with it. If you can look into that franchise and you guys agree.
Mr. Dickens?
Well, I wanna thank Wayne for showing me the video on the well, uh, explaining everything foot by foot. It's very interesting and enlightening. And I'd also like to thank Wayne for taking care of all the baseball fields, they're looking in really good shape. And especially for putting in a porta potty, since I walk my dog there every day. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Paul, our city manager and the city workers for taking out the worst speed bump in town and putting in a modern type speed bump that's more user-friendly, point of phrase. And, uh, I'd like to thank Manuel and all of Main Street. That was an excellent Easter egg hunt Saturday. I mean, there was thousands of people here Saturday and the kids really enjoyed it, especially my four grandkids. They really loved it. I'd like to see it bigger and better next year and I probably would leave out all the businesses, but we had great business participation, donations, and what was amazing, Smith's was handing out Walmart water, Walmart was handing out Smith's water to people. I mean, they were just intertwining, crossing the boundaries and all joining together. I mean, it was excellent, uh, had, uh, fire department there, our, uh, chief of police was there. I mean, it, it was just a great activity, the whole county was there. It, it, it was great. Now, on a little darker side, um, the city's was restriping all the crosswalks and the speed bumps and stuff last week. And they have a trailer, either they're not plugging it in or it doesn't have lights. The, the lights are working on the truck, but not on the trailer. You know, they have, that is like their c- crash cushion type thing and the truck lights are flashing, but nothing's going on on the trailer. If you could check in on that.
That would come from a maintenance program coming from our mechanic.
It, it could be as simple as just plugging it in, I, I don't know what the story is.
That's for all our vehicles, not trailers, everything we have.
Okay, uh, does the city own the parking lot in front of the Fire and Ice, where all the events were? Or does the post office?
The city does.
Right here at the post office?
City does.
Yeah. Okay, the, the reason why I'm asking, I, I was approached about this. You know, we, we have the sign there in the post office park as you're exiting, you know, watch for pedestrians and stuff. And you got this big raise up that people have to climb up or crawl up or walk all the way around. I, I'd like to see some steps and, and some railing installed for the people, especially the elderly. You know, it's inconvenient for them to go to the parking lot and the post office.
We can, we can ask the post office about that, that post office property.
The, the parking lot?
Not the parking lot, but the, the cement barrier.
Where the drive, where the drive-through is, that right drive-through?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the drive-through. There, there's a door there where everybody goes into their post office boxes, that, that's the main entrance. Outside, they, they have the sign, watch for pedestrians, so I think they might appreciate.
Well, we'll talk to them about it, I don't, I, I, we'll talk to them about it, but I don't know if they ever designed that to be an entrance there. Uh, I don't know if they wanted people to be crossing there, but we'll talk to them about it. But that is their, that, if we were to do any work for that, we'd have to have their permission because that cement and things there is, is their property and to find out.
No, I'm talking about putting it in the parking lot over, to, to get in to, to the exitway there so people can enter into the doorway. Then one more item, um, on the construction phase, I guess that was part of it, on First Street, they tore down the old, uh, Wanderman there. It was a dry cleaner or something along the, the San Jose.
That was part of, uh, our building teardowns, it didn't have anything to do with.
Well, it was coincidental. But anyway, it, it opened up an accessway to, uh, Davis Street and Geist there and the people would, was wondering if the city could put up a fence to prevent everybody using it as an access, entering and leaving and having to do Geist and the other streets like they should.
Where does this happen?
There by the Methodist Church.
The church.
Where, where they, they tore down their, their Wanderman, you know what?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll go look at it.
And they enter straight into Davis, the intersection of Davis and Geist.
Don't come to her. I'll be at seven before you.
That'll work, okay?
That'll work, 'cause I'm very gassed.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Lewis?
Uh, just like to follow up on the crosswalk striping from, uh, Riverwalk Park to the other half of Riverwalk Park. From the Riverwalk Park to the pond, uh, that needs to be striped and probably slow down the traffic there as well. There's some guy, I don't know who he is, got a yellow car, runs around town and it sounds like a, a hot ride. And, uh, he was, there was twenty-five kids, um, in that, in that park the other day. And, uh, he went flying by there about forty miles an hour.
Yeah, if, if there was ever a place to put a crosswalk, actually, that would.
Well, yeah, let it cross the two parts.
Put some kind of a reduced speed sign or.
Yeah.
Double, double speed, you know, d- double speed fine there.
And any, any, any of these towns you go to, they, uh, there's signs that say, uh, people who are crossing the street have the right of way. And when somebody's standing at a crosswalk, cars are supposed to stop and that's what those signs should say. Because they have dogs with them, they have little children, children are running ahead of their kid, uh, their parents and, well, we all, we all know that story.
There's always something you run, run across.
Yeah.
Well, the kids are going from the playground over to the gazebo to play with the ducks, that could work.
That's all I have there.
Okay, I've got one thing and I'm gonna read this into the record. It's a letter from Mississippi Reynolds that ran for mayor. I was informed on April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, that members of the Animal Care Center staff were forbidden to seek medical intervention in the event an animal became ill. I humbly request this newly, new ruling be publicly addressed so that alternate funding may be actively sought by community members. Although this may not be an affluent part of the United States, humanity should still be preserved. Um, this is a decision that I made, an executive decision. We are not gonna spend taxpayers' dollars on a dog that's been hit by a car. We're not gonna pay taxpayer dollars on a stray dog that we pick up the side of the road that might have parvo or something else. We're gonna put those animals down, okay? I mean, I'm not gonna ask the taxpayers of grants to pay veterinarians on bills on animals that may or may not be adopted. And the last one I signed was for two thousand and some dollars. So we're not gonna do this no more, okay? If you own a dog and you wanna spend that kind of money, which I will on my dogs, okay? But I'm not gonna spend it on a stray dog that's not gonna be adopted anymore.
Yeah, if they wanna start it.
And if they wanna start their own funding, here it is for the record, start your own funding and take care of them stray dogs. Okay? That's what they wanted on the record, so that's on the record. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.